Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everybody and congratulations to you all. If everybody could just please stand for me and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut? As well as the Charter and ordinances of the Town of Tallinn? And to faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Tallinn Town Council to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do.
Alright, congratulations. You can all take a seat. And at this time, I'll ask for a nomination from anybody for Chair.
I would like to make a motion to elect Councilor Chris Moran as Chairman of the Tallinn Town Council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
There's a discussion on that.
Oh, I guess there could be. I'm sorry, I'm not used to this at all. You all know this.
Yes, discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Yep.
I would like to just ask a couple of questions and this might not be the right time. But I did want to have a discussion about the overall leadership before we vote. And I don't know if this is the proper time or not, but how that would be split up.
Sure.
And if there is a plan, not a plan, not that anyone has a plan, but a thought process that that will be bipartisan. That there will be a Chair that is a Democrat, which obviously is the way things would go. And then a Republican that would be the Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'll say that. I do genuinely believe that that's generally the best practice is to have a bipartisan leadership on the councils and on the various boards. I think in this instance, personally, I'll speak for myself. I feel a little bit differently about that. I absolutely respect Counselor Shay. He feels strongly about his positions on things and that's his absolute right and I'm looking forward to working with him. But I don't know that he is the right fit for the Vice Chair position just given how strongly he feels about, you know, certain things. And so, and you know, in the past, other boards and commissions have been, well, Republicans and Democrats have chosen people from the same party in the leadership positions. Again, I think that should generally be the exception and not the rule. And so, that's my position in this instance.
So if I may just respond to that. There has not been, to my knowledge, a break like that. There's always been bipartisan leadership. And the last time there was a five to two, when the Republicans had the five to two, Steve Johnson was the Vice Chair, who was a Democrat. And there was a prior instance of that as well. I don't know those people, so I'm not going to bring that up. But that has been the history of the Town Council. On the Board of Ed, there are three leadership positions of Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Secretary, which does allow for a Chair and a Vice Chair to be from the same party. But the Secretary is allowed to be involved in agenda planning and is part of the leadership, so therefore can inform their caucus of what's going on. I'm curious as to if this is the position that you all are taking. How would you get information to the caucus? That's number one. Number two, this is about representation. And I understand that you guys won by 400 votes apiece or whatever it's going to be. But there's 1,800 people that voted for Joe and 1,720 people who voted for me. And those people deserve representation at the leadership table as well. So whether it's a strong voice or whatever, I feel that their ideas and their feelings and what they want to see for the town counts. Seventeen hundred versus 2,200 is not that big of a swing. And I just don't, I think that if you do this, you are saying that their voices do not matter at all and that you do not feel that they should have a voice at the leadership. I'm just going to say that. Whether it's me or Joe, if you don't feel like Joe is a fit, I don't know any of you. I've been on the Board of Ed for four years. I've been on Board of Ed in another town for four years. It's not a personality thing for me. It's not about a person. It's about representation for the people who voted for us and they should get to have a voice. And then lastly, I would say this. You have a five to two majority. What does it really cost you? You can vote us down at any time. We all know that at every single vote. What does it cost you to allow us to have a voice and an information conduit to our caucus? So.
Yeah, I'll let others, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I completely agree with you. Every single person who voted for you, who voted for Joe, who voted for any of us absolutely deserves that their voices heard. And absolutely, I want to have your voice and Counselor Shay's voice heard, you know, should I become the Chair? You know, I will say, I mentioned it to the Town Manager. I think Joe as the senior Republican on the council should be included on communication or communications from the town just like past practice when he did Chair and was Chair. And I would request that it be the Chair and the Vice Chair and Counselor Shay. This isn't about you not having a voice or cutting you out of any decision making or anything like that. I want you to have, we should all have access to the same information and all of that. So that's what I'll say. That's all.
I can trust Council. Leadership on the Town Council is about running the meetings and making sure that we're staying on track and running through the agenda. It's not about having a voice. We all have an equal voice on this council. From my standpoint, it comes down to a matter of tenure. Counselor Beebe, myself, you, and Counselor-elect Wells are new to the council, less than a year. Counselor Moran, Counselor Buckler have experience on the council. And so does Counselor Shay, but Counselor Shay's attendance record was 70% last session. And that's not, that's overall attendance. And so when you have a Vice Chair, you need somebody that you can rely on to fill the shoes of the Chair when they're not here. From my standpoint, Counselor Moran and Counselor Buckler fit that. As far as discussions, having a vote, having a say, we all have a say. And the Chair has as much say as everybody else on the council. The Vice Chair has the same say. So that's my thought.
Who's involved in agenda planning then? If there's no Republican at the agenda planning, and I think that's the key that I'm talking about, is agenda planning and having a conduit to be able to say, here's what I'm hearing and here's what things my constituency is bringing to me that we feel are important to the town. That's what I'm talking about. It's not, I understand what you're saying. It is about running the meeting. It's not, I get it. But, you know, I just feel like by excluding a Republican voice, which has never been the practice, is disturbing to me to get started. And it doesn't feel good like, oh, we all have the same voice. You know, you say that, but when you start off like this, it doesn't feel like everybody has a voice.
Sure, and I'll just speak from my past experience. So Chairman Murray and I got along very well. I respected, we didn't always agree, but I expected him. He had sort of an open line of communication with me. I wasn't involved in agenda planning in any sort of formal way. But certainly if I had things that, you know, were a concern to us, I would, you know, mention it to him and it was his decision obviously what to do. And certainly I would want that with, you know, with you and Counselor Shay, you know, open lines of communication. If there's something that you want to see on the agenda or a concern, certainly, you know, I would want to do those things. So, but again, I'm just speaking to what my experience was in the past, so.
Can I address the point? So based on Robert's rules, and I'm going to, I'll speak about history since I'm probably the oldest person on board here. Robert's rules basically say that the party, that the constituency that succeeds or wins in the election assumes the leadership role on the council, right? That's the way that that typically works. It has not always been this way in Tallinn. It was implemented maybe 25 years ago, maybe between 20 and 25 years ago. And I know that because I was one of the persons that proposed it. So at that time, it was not traditional for us to share Chair, co-chair positions. It was something that was implemented after a lot of discussion and it was a goal that we had. It hasn't always worked out that way. A case in point, that before tonight, there was a, where I had been Vice Chair of the zoning commission, it was a decision made not to extend that role to the person that remained, the Democrat that remained in planning zoning commission after I left. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that this has not been historical fact in Tallinn. It was a relatively new implementation and I believe that it's worthy to move forward and to evaluate that, you know, this on a case by case basis. But it's not something that is a de facto, has always been this way. And in fact, the rules that govern our meetings don't actually call for it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
And I just kind of want to piggyback on what Mary Lee was saying. So this last session on planning and zoning, I believe it was Joe Mateus and Andy Powell who had called the Chair and Vice Chair role. Board of Ed, I think, has had three instances I can think of. I know one was with Ashley Lundgren when she was Chair with a Vice Chair. I'm trying to think. There was one more too that I can't off the top of my head. But I think there's been three in the last 10 years, possibly. But anyway, the bottom line is this is done. This is not a regular basis. It's not a unique situation. Always still have to vote. Anyone can make a motion for anybody. There's a vote. There's a vote right now. I would love to call the question. If I could make a motion to call the question, that would be great. In all fairness, I didn't let Joe speak against it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment. First, I understand, you know, from history that, you know, I have a very strong opinion about a lot of things, which I don't necessarily like. But it doesn't, you're assuming that I would be nominated as Vice Chair from a Republican side, which is not necessarily the case. I think I would have no issue with Al Green being Vice Chair. And she's done a great job on Board of Ed. She's got a good history in this town. And I think a 25-year history of goodwill where, you know, the Republican is in the super majority, they elect the Democrat, vice versa. I don't think it's a relatively short time, 25 years. It's actually pretty impressive that you've carried this on for this long. So, and I still think that it really shows that, you know, because there is still a significant number of Republicans in this town, that it shows a certain amount of goodwill and a voice for those members of the town.
And just to make my position clear, it's been intermittent, right? It's, I can give you my tenure, but it's been intermittent. So it hasn't been a continuous practice.
Again, I don't have these 89, 12 years personally.
You're not as old as I am.
How about that? But I mean, 12 years, I go back, I can recall that that's done kicks. And you said it started 25 years ago, which is great that it was actually raised 25 years ago. And in fact, you suggested, I think it's great too. So it's just.
And I'll just add one other point that, and I completely respect what both you and Counselor B. Saw are saying. And certainly, absolutely Republican voices, your voices are important to be heard. And I'll just, I know when there was a discussion in planning and zoning about how to handle Mary Lee's vacancy, then Chair Andy Powell, you know, wasn't in favor of having a first term individual serve in a leadership position. And so, you know, we can agree or disagree. That's certainly, you know, that's certainly something that, you know, it is something that I consider anyway, but appreciate whatever you want to say.
So can I cut in? Forgive me for being so green at this. But everybody has had a part of the discussion at this point. Are you ready to vote for the Chair since that motion is still out there? Alright.
You want a roll call vote?
Sure. Absolutely. Joe?
Aye.
Mary Lee?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Okay, Brett is not online, is he?
He is, but he does not get a vote. He'll be sworn in.
Oh, that's right. He's not sworn in. I'm so sorry. Okay, so motion is passed unanimously for tonight. Chris is Chair and I will hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you all for coming.
Right, I appreciate it. So now we'll move to Agenda Item Six, which is the election of our Vice Chairperson. Is there a nomination for a Vice Chairperson? Obviously, we'll have some discussion, but, you know, it's going to be as well.
So Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
For the record, I'd like to nominate Randy for Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
So is there a discussion?
I would like to just say that this is supportive of what Democrats have said that they want to support bipartisanship. And it's a, it's a myth about bipartisanship, hearing all voices and hearing all voices to be part of the conversation. And the lack of leadership, I mean, Jacob was new to the Town Council when he started. So, you know, he came from the Board of Ed and he became one of the leadership positions right away. So I don't think that that's necessarily a reason. But again, it's up to everyone else. I'm just stating my position on it. And I just, again, I feel like I have to speak to people who voted for us. And I gotta say, they need to have, they need to be represented. And I'm just, I'm here to represent them. It's not about me. It's not about Joe. It's about the people who voted for us and that they need representation. And it's up to you guys to decide whether they're going to get it or they're not. So.
Well, they certainly have representation that's involved on the council and as we all have people vote. But as we say, other counselors.
From my standpoint, it does come down to tenure, not political party. I got a fair number of votes and I felt that I was not even interested in being a Vice Chair because I'm too new to the council and don't, I lack the experience. So for me, it's a matter of experience and that's what I'm going to basically.
So I just want to make a, if I can address this one. So, so I want to make a point that in commissions that where the, where the winning party has the Chair and Vice Chair positions, that doesn't mean that citizens that didn't vote for them are not represented. Because when we take this oath and when we stand up there, and I say this as someone who's been a Chair multiple times, both on, for a commission for which I was in the majority and also as a Commissioner of Minority, as a Minority Commissioner of a majority party. So we are obligated to represent all citizens. And it's not that because we are of different political parties that we don't represent the full complement of citizens. I think that's really important to understand here, that leadership is obligated to make sure that all voices are heard. And that whether or not a minority member is in the Vice Chair position doesn't compromise the citizen's ability to be heard. And I mean, that's the way that it's been. Everybody can come. Everybody can have a voice. Everybody can speak. Everybody can petition. We're talking about a, and to be very, very clear, the Vice Chair doesn't set the agenda with the Chair. That is not something that I did as a Vice Chair. That is not something that I usually ever did as a Chair. I set the agenda with town staffs. And then there were, there was advising and consent as needed. But it's not, it was not a group effort. So I want to just make it very clear that leadership on a committee is, or on a commission, is, or council, is obligated to represent people, whether or not they're of the same party. So it doesn't mean that anybody is just incentivized here.
Then why not do it? Why not make it bipartisan?
I'm asking, I've never been in a, I've never had this kind of debate on a commission before. This is not a, where there's been, you know, the legislative parliamentary process and parliamentary rules for this are clear and there's just a great deal of discretion involved. And I, this is, whether it's gone one way or the other, I've honestly not seen this happen before, so.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Shay?
Aye.
Counselor Beebe?
Nay.
Counselor Buckler?
Nay.
Counselor Rainey?
Nay.
Counselor B. Saw?
Aye.
I'm a nay as well, so that nomination fails. So we're still on Agenda Item Six. I'll just ask if there's another nomination.
So Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jen Buckler as Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second. Discussion.
It feels like it's trying to, this sort of sets the tone for what the next two years are going to be like, which is a great concern.
I disagree, simply because this is a matter of running the meetings and making sure that we stay on track and keep discussions where they should be and moving the council forward when Counselor Moran is not available.
I just, because, to support the motion I just made, Counselor Buckler is a very good parliamentarian. So as far as somebody who can manage the meeting and run the meeting, that to me is extremely important, having, you know, been in the middle of multiple meetings where we have a lot of questions. So to me, that's, I was not, you know, when we talked about this, that was an easy choice for me, so.
Other discussion? I'll just say that to a certain extent, I understand and Counselor Shay's concern. Certainly, I don't want to start our council sort of on a note where we're not, you know, where it appears like we're not united. And so I understand that concern. You know, I think that there's still trust that we all have to build with each other and my hope is that we can do that. So I will just say that I will endeavor to do whatever I can to make sure that, you know, there's an open line of communication of all of us. As I mentioned, I do want Counselor Shay as the senior Counselor on the council to be included in communications to make sure that you all have all the information that we have. And I also, you know, would welcome, you know, ongoing conversations with Counselor Shay and I, you know, about agendas or anything like that. So I just want to put that out there. I do understand and respect both of your positions. If there's no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Shay?
Nay.
Counselor Beebe?
Aye.
Counselor Buckler?
Aye.
Counselor Rainey?
Aye.
Counselor B. Saw?
Yeah.
And I'm a nay as well, so that passes. Now to Agenda Item Seven, which is the discussion and adoption of the meeting schedule and setting the time for the regular meetings. Ryan, if you could just talk us through the.
Sure. Typically, the Town Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM. Do you wish to continue that is kind of the question here? And the schedule, we look through it. There's no major holidays or, and if there were cause to cancel a meeting in the future, we can do that impromptu at any point prior to, with proper notice and such.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, I'm fine with keeping the schedule as it's been, the second and fourth Tuesdays at seven. But welcome any discussion if there's any concern about that before there's a motion to.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Attached to your packet, everyone in council should be a copy of said rules and procedure and schedule, potential.
Right, we'll move on to procedure after this point, but that's true. We do have the close schedule and the rules and procedure scheduled on page three of the packet. If there's no discussion beforehand, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting schedule for '25, '26, and '27 as set forth in our packet, page three, with the start time at 7:00 PM. So, second, Counselor Beebe, who, and Counselor Rainey seconded? I'll do a roll call, sorry, is there any discussion about this? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote for starting the meetings. Counselor Shay?
Aye.
Counselor Beebe?
Aye.
Counselor Buckler?
Aye.
Counselor Rainey?
Aye.
Counselor B. Saw?
Aye.
That passes. So moving on to Agenda Item Eight, Rules of Procedure. Ryan, I don't know if there's anything you want to mention, but they are in the packet as you wrote.
The rules of procedure are basically how we run these, run these meetings. And it runs through the agenda, basically each agenda item and how they play out in our rules. It's all defined. So an agenda item that you see basically is spelled out in the rules of procedures. So that's what you're voting on. So you have it all in writing. If there's any changes you want to make in that, now is the time to do that.
Counselor Ray?
I'd like to make a motion to swap our public participation to be three minutes at the beginning of the meeting and two minutes at the end. This would allow the public to speak on topics a little more broadly without having to wait till the end.
I know you made a motion as part of that. Would you be alright with commending your motion to adopt the rules of procedure that are set forth with the amendment that changing public participation initially to be three minutes and the second public participation at the end to be two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, any discussion, I'll say in that, if there's any other discussion about concerns about rules of procedure or things that anyone would like to change, obviously, you're allowed to have that conversation.
Start off this way, but I hate your fan making it for three minutes and two minutes at the end because there's so much to get through these meetings. We're going, the last two years, we've gone two to six hours in these meetings. I think if we're causing the public participation beginning, it's just potentially just drag out the meetings even longer than where we're going. Because we can start with Ryan, because of the experience in the past two years, Counselor, on these types of issues, I think it can be problematic.
Other discussion?
I think for that point, we're talking about an extra minute of time for individuals speaking at the beginning of a meeting. We don't get much participation in general, aside from, you know, maybe when it's budget season. You know, say you have 10 people, which is a stretch. We typically don't get 10 people. You're talking about maybe having an extra 10 minutes at the beginning of a meeting as opposed to 10 minutes at the end. I think what kind of outweighs that is the fact that most people have lives and they want to get home to their families. And so maybe they want to speak a little bit longer at the beginning of a meeting as opposed to waiting through everything. And as Counselor Shay mentioned, you know, sometimes these meetings go long and they just can't get around to waiting for that extra three minutes at the end. So I think giving them an opportunity to maybe having an extra minute at the beginning is not so much for us sitting around, but it means a lot to families who are just trying to say what they need to say to the Town Council and get out of here.
Before I come back to Council greeting, anybody else who hasn't, Counselor B. Saw, Counselor Beebe?
Yeah, so we were just talking about people having a voice and I think that this gives people more of a voice. And we were asked as part of our business over our last several meetings to try to expand upon the ability for people to give us a little bit more input. We were also asked to, for people to get a little bit of a response from us during this so that they can feel they were kind of speaking to a void. So I think this extra one minute at the beginning just, you know, is responsive. It gives, allows us to be responsive to the public and honestly, that's our job. So it means that we're here 10 extra minutes or so, and we are.
Order back to Council greeting. Counselor B. Saw, if you can. Counselor Rainey?
No, Counselor Beebe wrapped it up. Um, no, uh, councillor Bee uh, uh, wrapped it up. I, I think uh, public engagement is important. I've, um, I'd like to see more of our citizens come to the meetings, um, engage on Zoom and ask us questions and give us feedback. And I think this allows them to do that.
Uh, I'll just say that, um, while I do understand the councillor Shay's concern, um, I, you know, our meetings tend, tend to go on. Uh, they really can, um, go on for a while. I do think it's important to, um, you know, encourage, encourage public participation. Um, obviously, I would, you know, ask the, the members of the public, if, if we do switch it to three minutes at the beginning. Um, but they do try to, you know, stick to that as best as they can, just in the interest of keeping the, the meeting moving. Um, but I, I do think it's important to um, increase the, you know, make things as easy as we, as we can to the council. So, um, if there's no other discussion, I will do a roll call vote. Uh, councillor Shay?
Aye.
Councillor Bee?
Aye.
Councillor Buckler?
Aye.
Councillor Rainey?
Aye.
Councillor Bissau?
Aye.
Uh, I'm nay as well, um, so that passes. Uh, so item nine on the agenda, the town manager's introduction is coming before.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Again, my name's Brian Foley. I am the town manager. I've been here uh, three plus years. I serve at the pleasure of town council via a, a contract. Uh, I am very, very happy and honored uh, to be here in this role. Uh, and I don't say that shabbily at all. I walk out, out the door every day, so completely happy and lucky uh, to be in this position. I have a mother uh, in this town. Uh, she's uh, in, in the, I don't want to say her age, tell me. Uh, and, 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 you know, she's older. And I also have a, a daughter in our school system. Uh, I couldn't be any happier with the education my daughter has received in this, in this town, um, as a, as a footnote. Uh, as a town manager, uh, coming from uh, the city of Hartford and uh, the state of Connecticut, prior roles as well as a, a, a prior, a private media company. I can say this, this staff here, I've never ever encountered a staff that goes above and beyond, acts outside of their role, does things that they, they are not asked to do uh, by their job description and do it voluntarily and do it happily. I've never seen that in such a degree as it is here. We have the hardest working uh, staff here in town that I, that I've ever uh, worked with. And uh, I, I have uh, since day one, getting here, working to uh, improve the culture and have a positive work environment. I, I think we've done a very good job. Our succession planning is uh, strong here and we've had some absolutely great successes in our succession. Uh, one of my roles is, is to build uh, public confidence, help instill public confidence in government. And when I say government, town government, that is uh, town hall, our staff as well as uh, town council. My job is to ensure that the town has confidence uh, in council as a whole as well. Uh, as well, you know, my, when I was hired here, I was brought in to um, improve the morale in the town, around politics and, and, you know. I'm going to continue to try to do that. I can say this, Rainey, I don't know you and Brett very well at all. But everybody else on council, I know, and all of you have good hearts. I like and enjoy all of you that are here, and I couldn't be prouder to work for you. Understand there are disagreements. We're going to have disagreements and, and, and I'll say it, Chris came and sought me out and told me, please communicate with Joe uh, on their side and make sure they have everything that we have. He specifically made a point to say that for what it's worth. Um, and, and I will do that. I am not a Democrat. I am not a Republican. I am as neutral as you can possibly be. Over the next two years, I will be accused of, of being one of those each by many people in town. I can take it. I'm strong. I've been called worse, uh, certainly today. So it's, it's not a big deal. Uh, so I will do the best to remain neutral. Unfortunately, I do, I'm not political, but I have to make decisions that sure feel political sometimes. And I hate to do it, but I, I do it. I'm here to be the best town manager I can, and that is to represent the business of the town of Tallinn. I believe I do do a decent job at, at that, and I look forward to serving uh, this council. And with that, I say the best of luck uh, to all of you. Please appreciate the hard work of our staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so that brings us to agenda item ten, proclamations and presentations, of which we do have one tonight. Um, it's a proclamation recognizing National Veterans and Military Families Month. Um, I'll just read this uh, for the record. Whereas the freedoms and liberties we enjoy as citizens of the United States have been preserved through the valor, patriotism and dedication of the men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four, Congress designated November eleventh as Veterans Day to honor all Americans who have worn the uniform in times of war and in times of peace in defense of our nation. And whereas our veterans have answered the call to duty, placing their lives on the line to uphold the founding principles of our republic and to protect the American way of life. And whereas we owe a profound debt of gratitude to all veterans and their families who have also endured great sacrifice and hardship in support of their loved ones' service. And whereas it is our solemn duty as a grateful nation to support, respect and recommend, uh, so excuse me, remember those who have served and to ensure their legacy of courage and commitment lives on for generations to come. That therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Tallinn that hereby recognizes and thanks our veterans for their professional and personal sacrifices, honorably serving our country. Gave it at Tallinn, Connecticut, this twelfth day of November, twenty twenty-five. So that brings us to agenda item ten, um, public petitions and communications uh, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the council. Um, given the rules of procedure that, that we adopted, um, it will be a three-minute timer on the front end uh, of the public comment, uh, and two-minute at the end. Um, I'll just note uh, preliminarily, I, you know, I'll set a, a timer and just if it goes off, I'll just ask that you begin to start wrapping up your remarks, just in the interest of time. Um, so if, I'll start with the room. If there's anyone in the room that would like to speak. Yes, uh, just please uh, come forward and your name and, and address, please.
Um, good evening. My name is Senator Murray. I live at Eight Lisa Lane. Um, first of all, I want to congratulate all of you for being elected. I want to congratulate um, councillor Buckler and councillor Moran for vice chair and chair. Um, I am a junior at Tallinn High School. And for as long as I've been at the high school or not, uh, just in the school system, every year's budget's been worse. Teachers are being cut. There's one school nurse at the school. I can't go to the school nurse like any time of the day. I know, um, councillor Rainey, your son had a problem with that. Like, it's affecting us at the school deeply, these budget cuts. And I hope that this council can change that. Like, I would love to specifically know what this council is going to do to make sure that this, the school system will thrive, because it hasn't been. I have had to deal with classes that I can't get into because they're full, even though that's the appropriate level of class for my, me. So my choices were uh, go into A P chemistry or go into the um, typical chemistry instead of anonymous chemistry. And that's just not right, because A P chemistry is not leveled for me. But um, the typical chemistry is below my appropriate level for education. And because of the budget cuts, that wasn't possible. And I hope that there can be a change, that schools can prosper. But I don't know. I, I just, I don't know what you guys are going to do. I hope it's good, but I've had a really negative experience at the Tallinn, at Tallinn High School, Tallinn Middle School, Tallinn Elementary School and Birch Grove because of these budget cuts. And every year gets worse. And like, I know people that are leaving the school system because of that. I know people that their mental health is getting actively worse because of that. And it's just not cool. Um, I was talking to one of my friends today and she said that um, her math midterm, some of the students for tomorrow, some of the students have to go take the midterm in the hallway because there's not enough seating available in class to have it spaced out appropriately to take a math midterm. There, during class, there is students walking around in the hallway. That's incredibly distracting to be taking a test that's worth five percent of your grade while students are messing around in the hallway. And yes, administration tries to crack down on that, but even someone walking to the bathroom will interrupt someone taking a test. This is just not okay. And like, once again, I really hope that you guys can change that and make it better. Because it's not been better. And it's been actively terrible, honestly. And it makes everyone that goes to Tallinn Public Schools experience worse and worse and worse. Thank you.
Good timing, also. Um, I'll go online. Uh, if, if there's anyone online that would like to speak, just please raise your Zoom hand and you can ask me to unmute. It looks like uh, versus iPhone, we could ask them to unmute.
Done, Chris.
Okay.
I'm gonna try, maybe try Katie.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to, to, to versus iPhone. Um, we'll go to Katie Starkarter. We can have her unmute.
Good evening. My name is Katie Starkarter. I live at Eight Lisa Lane, uh, familiar due to the last speaker who I am the proud mother of. Um, I wish to also share my congratulations on uh, this council. Being a member of town council is not an easy job. Um, speaking from experience, it is uh, quite a challenge. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you, uh, including Brett, for volunteering to serve our community, to ensure that you are representing our community as a whole. Um, and any particular knowledge or perspective that you might bring to the table. Um, every one of your voices is important, and I give you a lot of credit for devoting your time away from your lives and families to serve our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I will go back to the room. Um, but if I come back, uh, we can turn my uh, person that still would like to speak, we can, we can try to get that again. Um, is there anybody in the room?
Chris Muniz, sixty-eight, Anthony Road, uh, Chair of Tallinn Democratic Town Committee. I want to congratulate every single one of you on your election. Uh, we uh, look forward to uh, all the positive things that we're all in and act from Tallinn. And we commend your dedication to every single resident uh, in Tallinn, regardless of whether or not they voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back online. If there's anyone online, please raise your Zoom hand. I don't know, Brisa is still on, I don't.
She, she's down at the bottom.
Okay.
And I think for fun, I'm going to have to dial star six nine, unmute.
Okay.
So she may have to, she may have to control it then.
Ask her one, one more time and um, perhaps you could hit star six nine or?
There we have.
It looks like.
Hello?
Yes.
Um, hello, um, my name is Brisa Walsh. I live on seventy-nine Merlot Way. Um, I would also like to congratulate everyone on the election. Um, I am a sophomore in Tallinn High School, and I also would like to address the budget cuts. Um, we have lost a lot of teachers due to low pay because of the cuts happening at Tallinn High School. Um, we've had multiple teachers in the high school and the middle school get cut because of pay. And we've had, also had classes like child development, um, getting cut or other important classes that people want to take. Um, the high school used to have eight language teachers and some of them were native speakers of the language. And now there are only three language teachers in our school. I've lived in Tallinn all my life. I have cousins who, and siblings who have attended Tallinn all the way back from fifteen years. And it is astounding the amount of classes and teachers we have lost and the amount of opportunities that students are also losing. Um, especially because last year, uh, the, the school had a scare where clubs were potentially getting cut. Um, including clubs like DECA or Smith, which are very important um, to learning about business or financial things. My sister is the president of DECA at UConn. And the amount of experience and like valuable things she learns in the club and in the classes that used to be offered in our school was very valuable. She is a junior at UConn. Um, and I've spoken with her and we've lost so many teachers. We've lost A P classes. Um, we just, students have lost so many opportunities and we could flourish more if these budget cuts weren't affecting us so heavily. Um, I know people personally who were thinking of leaving Tallinn High to go to other high schools because there's just not enough here to sustain them or bring them further along into college. I really hope that the uh, Tallinn Council will handle this better and there will be more changes just so our, our students can um, be successful in their careers or going to college or whatever they decide to do in life. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move back to the room.
Okay, George George, fifty-eight, run. Let's start off with the negatives. Got here before seven o'clock. I looked around and saw the seating arrangement, and I knew we were going on a slippery slope. And I couldn't get a straight answer. Then, uh, we had our first votes and I think we kind of crashed and burned. So I, I think maybe, let's put this nicely, people think things are different than they really are. So I talked to several of my friends about voting and they all voted. And most were independent. And guess who they all voted for? They said, I ain't voting for that guy's party. So all due respect, the majority of you got elected because of that man's party, not because they believe one way or the other so much. You got a lot of votes there, and that's not going to uh, go through to budget time because they won't be voting for that man's party. They'll be voting for, or against, they'll be voting for dollars. And I think uh, you should be very careful about what kind of buzzers you propose and work on the next few months. Because I think you're going to be very surprised when it comes to budget time. If you start out with the crazy numbers we've been starting out with the last few years, then it always gets brought down. So think wisely before you get carried away. We're trying to put a lot of stuff out there. It's great to have just that and the other thing, but don't forget it's the I want and what you need. But we have to concentrate on what the town needs. And if that means cutting back on a lot of other things, be it sports or parks or rec or whatever, whatever we have to cut back or it's not going to fly. So just be advised, I think you're going to be surprised. Maybe not. Maybe you understand because you've been here before, Chris, uh, but I think you'll be surprised. Things won't go exactly as you think because you were elected. But all due respect, it was a reason why to vote for where they, they were. Thank you.
Thank you, George. I'll go back online. If you'd like to speak, uh, raise your Zoom hand. Not seeing any. I'll go back to the room.
Uh, Dennis Deegan, six eight nine, Town Stage Road. Uh, many, many thoughts running through, but I'll look to keep it simple. Um, first of all, I thank you for the rules and procedures change uh, by switching three and two. Uh, hopefully that does provide um, constituents of all of you uh, to uh, voice their thoughts and opinions. Um, however, I am still hoping, and I don't know whether this is something that can be discussed and moved forward, whether you can make changes to that. I think it would be very good in other towns I've been a party to. Um, basically, there's some sort of dialogue or recognition of what someone says. And rather than prolong these meetings anymore than you have to sit through. Uh, and I certainly can appreciate that because I find myself not capable of letting, being here for all of them, of the entire sessions. Um, is even if uh, whether it's the chair or some designated person on the council, uh, after someone makes a statement, uh, acknowledge the fact that they, someone heard that and that maybe ask if there's anyone on the council that would like to look at that and/or get back to that individual and/or bring that forward as some of your discussions, just something, anything. So that just doesn't look like it's all on deaf ears, not suggesting it only exists. Um, and I guess, you know, thinking about this uh, before coming to tonight's meeting was um, you know, that, that old saying, careful what you wish for, you know? Um, and um, clearly there, whatever the reason was that the council went five and two. Um, and, um, clearly there, whatever the reason was that the council went five and two. Um, the fact is, this town, uh, is not in a good place. Um, because you have the needs of an education system that people don't want to support, plain and simple. That's all there is to it. Um, and, um, the thing is, things, uh, having an economics background, things spiral usually in one direction or the other. They're going up or they're going down. Um, there's no standing still, I always tell people, you standing still could ruin anything else, you're going backwards. So, the fact is, the school system here has been ripped apart from my perspective. Having been at the high school for much of the last ten years or good part of the last ten years with subbing. Um, and it's a shame, you know, you hear from some of the students and it's real. Um, so I guess what it comes down to is you really have the uneven, unenviable task, all of you, all seven of you. Uh, to try to figure out how, um, this town can come to grips with being a viable entity for the future. And for wanting to bring families in and bring people in because of a, because they come for a school system, safety and other factors, but. I know from my own standpoint, living in five, six, seven places, um, you always looked at the best school system and that's where you've got a house. Um, and so obviously that's my priority and whatnot, I'm gonna finish up very quickly, thanks. Um, so I guess I, I, I don't know what the solution to that is, but I hope that you can all work together. Uh, in trying to figure that out so that the public, uh, will recognize that and want to vote for something that will help them in the long run. Um, and I guess, um, I have other thoughts, but my time is up. Uh, I guess just finally, if I may, uh, one thing that I almost didn't vote this time for anyone here. Because, um, I felt that, at least in the past couple of years, um. Items aren't discussed here in the open, there is no real transparency from my perspective, okay? Things are discussed, I, I understand this need for wanting to be united or have a seven oh vote or whatever it is on important matters. But the fact is, when you don't express what's going on in each one of your heads as to how you came to that conclusion. From my perspective, there's no need to have any, again, that's how I feel. So hopefully there'll be more transparency in that regard, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I just will note, um, uh, in case anyone isn't able to hang on till the chair person report. Um, I do intend to have the chair hour again, um, you know, as a way to continue to try to have more of a dialogue with residents. Um, uh, but, but appreciate that, I'll go back online, uh, looks like Andrew's, uh, has his hand raised, we can ask him to unmute.
Hi, good evening, I'll make it, uh, short and sweet, first of all, congratulations to all of you. Red election, congratulations to the folks on the, on the BOE as well, I didn't get a chance to congratulate them, but, uh, I'll, I'll make a point that I think is, is. Everybody knows it's, I'll, I'll be captain obvious here, but, I, regardless of what party you're on. And regardless of whether you're in leadership or not, your, your job, your role is to represent everyone in Talon. You know, just because if, if there's democratic leadership doesn't mean that they're gonna, you know, neglect and not represent the Republicans if there was Republican leadership. They need to represent the Democrats as well, so it's not, it's not a point of what party you're on that you, you're gonna only represent the people that were voted for you. Your jobs that have represented everyone, I know you know that, I just wanted to make a point, just given the discussion that happened during the vote there, that. Leadership and everyone will represent everyone in town and not just one party over the other, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll go back to the room. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Andrew, the last speaker, uh, you could just provide your, your name and address. If I asked to unmute again.
Sorry about that, Andy Mantico, seven Lorraine Drive.
Thank you, sorry about that, decently, uh, I'll go back to the room. I'll go online. Please raise your zoom hand. I'll go back to the room one final time. And I'll go back online one final time. Okay, not seeing any more, we'll close public participation, uh, move on to agenda item twelve, public hearing items of which we have none. Uh, and that brings us to item twelve A, reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Um, we obviously haven't, uh, you know, uh, since we, since this council's formed, we haven't, you know, helped to sign out those. Those, uh, positions, I'll, I'll ask if there are already updates on that, I'll just note that, um, unless I'm forgetting anything, reports. Uh, boards and committees responsible for the council, so that's the Firehouse Subcommittee, um, that's the Contaminated Wells Task Force. Uh, the Boards and Commissions Vetting Committee, um, and, and maybe also CROG, so those will be things that will, um, will be assigned out. Um, for both this and the reports of the town council liaisons for the liaison spots. Um, I'll ask, um, everyone to, to, to email me with any preferences for, for liaisons, um, go for the next meeting, uh, probably by November twenty-first. Um, but, uh, I can get, I can get a bunch of those out as well. Um, does anyone who was previously a liaison, uh, to either the Firehouse Subcommittee, Contaminated Wells, or, um, I think that's really it. Have anything, Mary, anything on Firehouse Subcommittee since we last?
Yeah, so we, um, we got, we got, we got bids back, um, and there was a responsible low bid identified and contract documents leave more in progress. Yes?
There's some headaches involved in there, but yes, where they, we received some bids and, um.
So, so there's, so, so, um, we are supposed to have a meeting on the eighteenth. If, um, it would, uh, please the chair, uh, if it would be acceptable for me to continue in that role, um, I would do that so that we can actually proceed with that meeting.
Sure, um, yeah, so with the interest of the meeting, uh, so, the, the Firehouse Subcommittee, I believe if I'm remembering the documents that constituted it correctly, it's a. Uh, the fair, the chairman and vice chair are plenty of those people, so I would, uh, uh, appoint, uh, Mary Lee. Um, I would, um, and we don't have to decide this now, welcome, um, Counselor Buckler is okay with it, if either Counselor Shea or Counselor B. Sal would like to be present to ensure that we have, um, you know. Representation there, certainly I would welcome that, if that's okay with Counselor.
Absolutely.
We don't have to decide that tonight, but I just wanted to, to make that known, um, anything on contaminated wells?
Uh, we keep moving forward, um, with it, we had one well likely coming off over on, on the Vineyards State. Uh, is moving slowly with the grant money for the vineyards, um, it's, it's a lot of. Everyone's system's different, so it's not like if they're gonna make an adjustment to just one person's system, it's that way for everybody, so there's a lot of preparation, investigation, so. Uh, Michael Vincent asks some, uh, non-stop, you know, at, Jacob was big on that, you know, just staying on top of them, but they are doing the best they can. It's just, you know, state processes, many of us in this room understand this.
And I'll just ask, uh, we've talked about this obviously, but, um, the grant for the vineyards, that's not anything that the town is administering, that's something that the state is, and so we're a little bit, we don't have.
We fought to get the money from the state, but we are not administering it in any, in any way at all.
Right, yeah, so, but, there was a lot of effort, uh, on the town's part, um, to, to get that, that funding and I appreciate that, um, my question is just that we don't have. Completely control over the, uh, timeline and how that works.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Um, so, moving on to twelve, your reports of town council liaisons, um, as I mentioned again, we haven't, uh, you know, assigned any of that, um, I. Would welcome any, any, uh, emails to me with, uh, any particular, uh, boards or commissions you'd like to serve as liaisons to. Um, I will ask if anyone who was previously on a, a liaison, if there's any updates, um, you know, uh, Counselor Shea. Counselor, uh, BB, anything other than Firehouse?
No.
Okay. What's up, Buckler?
Uh, just one thing, PCC met with a special meeting, um, they're in the process of doing the, uh, planning the tree lighting and the parade, which is. December sixth this year.
Thank you. That's great.
Uh, the rec board met yesterday, uh, Monday, I was not able to attend, but, um, they set their calendar for the year. And they, uh, talked about several project updates that I see as in, uh, uh, town manager fully hasn't this report, so.
Great. Counselor B. Sal, no, none yet, but, uh, still will, honestly, will assign out the, the liaison spots. Um, so that's, uh, and I also don't have any, uh, any updates on that. Um, so that brings us to agenda item thirteen, our new business, um, so thirteen point one, appointment of town attorney for the term November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, through November third, twenty twenty-seven. Town manager fully.
Yes, you would, as the town council have an attorney, uh, available to you and you decide, uh, who that representation is, uh, currently. Uh, that is Rick Conti, uh, he has been here decades and decades, uh, there was a time when he wasn't, uh, he's currently down to, uh, two days a week, but. That is theoretical as in, you know, unfortunately, we call him more than two days a week and he's been responsive to that. Um, he is on the back end of his career, uh, i- if it's something he can't handle or doesn't have time to handle. Uh, he has certainly referred us and will continue to refer us to Halloran Sage or Con Kurenski, uh, but. That is not my decision in any way, it's entirely yours, sure.
Um, but I'll just know, uh, Attorney Conti has, as Brian mentioned, has been the town attorney for decades, um, do appreciate, uh. As the town manager mentioned, that, uh, Attorney Conti is sort of towards, towards the, uh, end of his career, um, but, uh. I know that the, the town is, is something that, you know, he's been very responsive in that, the event that he's not, he has, um, Howard and Sage or Con Kurenski to, to, uh. Provide us any legal support we need, should there be any issues with that, um, are any discussions?
Just briefly.
Sure.
Um, as, as long as, I am sure he's had discussions, as long as he, he did a great job the last two years, I'll say that. Um, I know he was part-time as well and did the same thing two years ago, that he was at the back end of his career. Um, if things go the way the last two years go, I have, uh, no doubt he's gonna do a great job. Um, as long as he wants to keep going with this, um, you know, there were instances where we did have to have Halloran Sage come in, there was instances where we had Con Kurenski and Capcel come in. Um, both firms did a great job kind of picking up, uh, where Attorney Conti couldn't, um, I personally. You know, worked with Attorney Conti a few times on different things, uh, he was nothing but, uh, helpful and responsive to the town council. Um, so as long as it's business as usual, I'm confident he's gonna continue doing a good job.
Comment or motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, appoint, um, Rick Conti as the town attorney for the term November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, through November third, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll tell me that motion.
Uh, Counselor Buckler, motions, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gray, second, any discussion? Not seeing any?
I just wanted, um, clarify, is there a, is there a, um, a transition plan at some point? Because if we, if we do have somebody who is, and I have a long history with Attorney Conti as well, who's been, who was, you know, again. A long time ago was fabulous with planning his own commission, but, um, where somebody's at the tail end of their career, if I'm working part-time already, are we looking at a transition plan?
Uh, he, he harbors no secrets, if he's gonna look to, to phase out, he would absolutely tell us, um, in advance of that and has, and that's why he said he's down to two days and. Um, if, if something comes into the town and it looks like it's gonna be a long battle for the town extending beyond his, his, you know, commitments to the town. Uh, he would, he would and has already, uh, farmed that out, make, makes recommendations based on like, let's say it's an environmental thing, you know, Halloran and Sage has a. Very good environmental or, you know, something, uh, you know, zoning with Con and Friends, you know, he makes recommendations, we've accepted them, I think it's, it's, uh, been great, I know there was. Our Kerma attorney, um, is, has, uh. We had some concerns that, but I, I sent you some correspondence today that we got with the Ker, the Kerma attorney, so, um, if he were gonna leave, uh, he certainly, he would, uh, tell us what.
Okay, so you're confident you have a, you have a trans, we have a transition map.
Definitely, very much so, I mean, if, you know, if something tragic were to happen, we could jump right on either of those two firms that I mentioned, um, and, and just run with it. If you guys, again, that's your decision, not mine, I do.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that.
And staff enjoys, uh, working with it as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll just note that, uh, you know, Attorney Conti obviously has a lot of institutional knowledge.
Yes.
Been here for, for decades, so appreciate his, uh, his work for the town and, um, and, and continue that, so, um, with that said, I'll, I'll do a, a roll call vote, uh, Counselor Shea. Hi, Counselor BB.
Aye.
Counselor Buckler.
Aye.
Counselor Grayney.
Aye.
Counselor B. Sal.
Aye.
That, uh, I'm an eye as well, so that passes unanimously. Which brings us to agenda item thirteen point two, consideration of a resolution authorizing the deposit of funds we receive for supplemental municipal revenue sharing grant. Uh, into the general fund, uh, Ryan?
Great, so this is, this is a, uh, move that we legally have to pass, uh, through council to move some money that received, uh, Yolita or, or, uh, Director of Finances online here to talk to Yolita.
Yes, good evening everyone and congratulations council, first day. Um, my apologies that I can, cannot be at the meeting, but I'm here online, so I'm happy to answer any questions. So, um, as I mentioned in the item summary, on October eighth, uh, we were informed that by the state of Connecticut, OPM, that. After making the required statutory, statutory payments from the municipal revenue sharing fund. There were approximately five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars to distribute to eligible municipalities. And town of Talon received two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents on October twenty-eighth. So I'm just asking to appropriate to general fund.
Thank you.
Simple.
Are there any questions? Also, just to clarify, this is just, uh, you're, you know, we're accepting the twenty-three, approximately twenty-three hundred dollars from the, from the state. Um, and you're asking to, so the motion would be to put it into the, uh, general fund, is that correct, Yolita?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution authorizing the deposit of funds to be received for supplemental municipal revenue sharing grant into the general fund.
Similar.
Uh, moved by Counselor BB, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Buckler, is there any discussion? Okay, uh, I don't know that we need a roll call for this one, uh, unless anybody asks for it, um, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yolita, uh, so thirteen point three is appointments to vacancies on various, uh, municipal boards and commissions. Um, I'll say this is sort of a holdover from, uh, Counselor Shea and I from the, the previous, uh, council. Um, there's a, there's a one appointment to the permanent celebration committee, um, and then three reappointments, two for the permanent celebration committee and one to the historic district commission. Um, as always, you know, we greatly appreciate volunteers, our town runs on volunteers, uh, whether it's elected boards or appointed boards, um, or, or just volunteers in general. We couldn't do it without them, so we're grateful for that, um, so I would, um, you know, recommend that we approve them, you know, the, I was kind of.
Right, yeah, usually agree with these things.
Um, so I wanted to attain a motion to appoint the, um, to appoint and reappoint the various individuals, um, as outlined in agenda item thirteen point three. So, moved by Counselor Grayney, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Buckler, is there any discussion?
Quickly, I just wanted to make note that, uh, one of the reappointments is Jim Tumi, who is currently in the room anxiously awaiting to hear if he's reappointed.
Jim, he does a lot for the town, so appreciate you being here, thank you for, for recognizing him, uh, does a lot for the town and a lot of variety capacity, so thank you. Um, any other discussion? Okay, um, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? That passes unanimously. Uh, so that brings us to agenda item fourteen, old business of which we have none. And, uh, brings us to item fifteen, our first report of town manager, um, for the council.
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, I, I wanna thank all our election, uh, folks that came out, that, that work our elections and the, the re-camus as well. Uh, yesterday for that job, but they did an outstanding job, there was, uh, virtually flawless, uh, process in, in that regard, so I thank them for their efforts. I wanna thank, uh, the cert team, uh, Jim and the Talon Fire Department, the Connecticut State Police for trying something new this year, we closed the green for Halloween. Uh, and by all accounts massively successful, we'll, you, we'll look to, um, we'll look to, to continue that next year, I talked to the residents on the green, they all loved it as well. Um, so it's, it's, Halloween has changed over the decades and it seems in a lot of towns, there's certain areas where everyone just blocks too, and for us. Uh, that has, uh, been the green, so we are very thankful for the, our volunteers and, and our first responders for, uh, making it a safe event. And there's been suggestions for like a hayride or something along those lines on Halloween as well, so, um, that was my suggestion, so I'll look to, uh. Some of the neighbors have asked for supplemental funding for the big candy bars, but, uh. It's a wonderful neighborhood and we're very lucky to have, uh, residents on the green that accommodate. Well, we got our financial audit back, the CLA, we got a, a great audit, uh, again this year, very happy, I believe I, I sent it to you, if not, I will send it to you. Uh, I wanna thank our first, our human services and our food pantry for the, uh, stress that they're under and their grace in which they're handling it. I wanna thank all the residents that have come forward and, uh, donated, the amount, the amount of people that I just see foot traffic walking in to go downstairs, um, and write a check. um, and write a check has been, uh, incredible. More to come on this, but I want to thank Goya, uh, for their massive donation, there's an executive who lives in town and I'm not sure he wants his name out there as of yet. Um, but I know that we sent our DPW and some equipment up to Massachusetts to take that, that food in for our food pantry, so we are very, very lucky, uh, to have all the people here in town that we have. I met with Dave Cochran, uh, our, our development planner, and, uh, we talked about the new PZC. Uh, he says, uh, it's gonna, um, he's gonna work as best he can to make sure it's a smooth, uh, transition. I met with, uh, uh, both Joe and Chris already, I thank you for those meetings, I'll meet with the new elected people, uh, Reenie and Brett hopefully, I think you're tomorrow and Brett hopefully soon thereafter. Um, and I, I thank you guys, uh, for those times, but you, I think you'll find it a productive meeting with the new, uh, folks, it's typically, I'll bring you up to date on litigation, big projects, um, and any questions that you have in town, uh, but I, I appreciate the time. Uh, as far as the, um, the, the, uh, projects going on right now that we, we were, we were scheduled to do the basketball courts this fall, uh, Tarran Cove and Crandall. It's pavement and talking to, um, Director Lappin in DPW, he's wishy-washy about late fall paving jobs, and so we'd rather wait to the spring, um, to get a more consistent, uh, pavement, so we've already done some work out there in regards to improving the area, taking down some of the trees, getting ready to build a wall and such along the Crandall's parking lot. Um, but we're not gonna pave un- until the spring and that was entirely a decision, uh, with, with, uh, lots of input from, uh, others that I made to postpone it towards the fall, so I thank Megan for being flexible or, or Grant's person and, and our project manager in regards to that. Um, I met with Walt, Dr. Willa and Mike Wilkinson regarding the SRO, there's a contract that I'm trying to obtain from the state, I'm gonna try to parade along, we meet again, I believe this week, uh, in regards to hiring of said SRO and there's some other things that, that, uh, we'll look to cover in the, the coming years, uh, in regards to, I have some funding ideas and such for that. I thank everyone for coming, uh, to the Park's Garage, um, and, and helping us, uh, present that. It was a, a, a great event and, and the garage is actually starting to look, uh, fantastic, so, um, it's, it's, it's great. Today I met with the new, with a lot of the new town management in the region. Um, it, uh, it was great, you know, because, you know, there's a lot of, uh, in regards to regionalization and, and projects. Um, one, one of them being ongoing is the regionalization of our animal control officer. Uh, and we have a new town, or said first election in, in Wellington, this would be completely foreign to him coming in and we've done a lot of work. Um, so it was, is important for us to get that communicated, we are in a good spot, uh, to continue, uh, going along as we do. I want to thank human services and, uh, Chief Lightel for getting the, uh, NMOX alone lead behind packages updated and together. And that's, you know, it, it is what it is, when someone, when there's an overdose, they leave behind a, a packet to, uh, help in the future if there's other things and, uh, those have been updated and, and training given, so, uh, that's all I have, is any questions, thank you.
Uh, any questions on the town manager's report?
Thank you to all the staff, um, and thank you especially to the human services staff for what they've been doing, I know that I was down there a couple times and they are doing, you know.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, um, Ryan, the basketball paving, um, just keep reminding me, is that something that, the budgeting for that we received, the grant or?
I, I thought it was grant CIP.
Okay.
It was in CIP, okay.
Oh, and just, so CIP capital improvement plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, also just want to echo what you mentioned about.
Oh, let me, let me just say this, I can interrupt.
Sure.
We had planned on doing one court and concrete, we're doing them all, uh, in pavement. They are pavement now, they've been pavement for decades, so, uh, that's what we're moving towards, it's the same with possibly the high school task courts too. Pavement now might continue to be pavement unless Megan can whip up some money, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to echo what everyone said about human services and the food pantry, I know, um, they're doing great work and the community as a whole has stepped up.
Mrs. Orr and Jeff Foss, uh, two people in the Carrington community here, uh, that are just kicking. They're doing well down there and, and there's others I'm sure are missing them, but I see them, they're literally sweating, awesome, working.
Well, awesome for the, the work they're doing and obviously I'll just mention that, whatever anyone in the community can do to help folks out, um, in human services and food pantry, it's great, uh, I'm sure it can help direct people if they need that as well. Uh, and the last thing I'll mention is that, uh, I also, I took my kids to the room for, for the, for Halloween, it was great, um, appreciate that, uh, appreciate all the homeowners on the green who do have to purchase some candy. The public tap meeting, the democratic tap meeting, we're there and, you know, candy, so appreciate that, um, you know, any community involvement, uh, and support for kids, it just makes the night special enough, so. Thank you.
Yep.
That brings us to item sixteen, adoption of minutes, uh, we have two sets of minutes. On the October twenty eighth, special meeting minutes and the October twenty eighth, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the special and regular October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting? So moved, moved by Council Grayney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council BB, is there any discussion or amendment to? Yeah, ten minutes. You're none, uh, we'll do a roll call, Council Shay?
Aye.
Council BB?
Aye.
Council Grayney?
Aye.
Council Bisla?
Abstained.
I'm an aye as well, so that passes, uh, five votes, uh, in favor and, and Council Bisla abstained. Uh, that brings us to correspondence to council, um, again, we can assign this out, I'll just go to John since he handled that before, do you know if you had any correspondence?
We've had, uh, one email that came in, um, the council CC'd an email, uh, between the Director of Administrative Services and Resident regarding the status of well water test results.
Thank you. So that brings us to the chairperson's report, um, uh, I, I do have a couple of things, one, I just want to know, it's sort of been alluded to, uh, Councilor elect Wells, um, is, is, uh, traveling back to, uh, Connecticut, so that's why he's not here in person, he is online. Um, but because he hasn't been sworn in yet, uh, he is not participating in the votes tonight, so he will be sworn in, I believe, tomorrow, um, we look forward to having him. Um, I also want to thank the residents who came up to vote last Tuesday, um, it was a historically high voter turnout, regardless of who you voted for, greater community involvement, um, is so important to the success of our town. I also want to thank the election officials who ensured that we had a smooth and secure voting process. We have a lot of work to do for Tallinn, the council is responsible for ensuring we have a safe, thriving community that serves all residents from our youngest to our oldest. We have an obligation to balance providing top-notch services to residents while understanding the economic reality that many of our neighbors face. Uh, we must always remember that all the decisions we make here directly impacts our community. Um, I understand that there will be some who do not agree with every decision we've made tonight or any night. But everyone's voice on this council is important to carrying out our responsibilities. The council makes the best decisions for our town when all perspectives are considered. We will not always agree, but if our starting point is that we are all acting with the best interest of the town in mind, we can ensure that our discussions are respectful and policy. I can assure you that I will promote transparency and open lines of communication, um, with both Democratic and Republican councillors. Um, each council volunteers countless hours to making Tallinn better and I am proud to serve with each of you. Uh, the council is also fortunate to have, uh, dedicated staff at town hall that works tirelessly for Tallinn, from the town manager to Mike Wilkinson, Yolita, Sarah Beth, Anne, Scott, Jason Bev and countless others. They want this council to succeed because when we do, Tallinn succeeds. I also look forward to working collaboratively with all of our boards and commissions, including the Board of Ed and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Each board brings a unique perspective to the work we do and it is critical, um, to us making the best decisions for the town. Most importantly is my hope that residents continue to be engaged in council meetings, um, in other elected and not elected meetings. Attend the meetings, read the minutes and let your elected leaders know your perspective during public participation or by writing in. We are listening. We have made some changes to our rules tonight, or we made a change to the rules tonight to try to improve residents' experiences at council meetings. Um, and as I mentioned, I will also be holding a chair hour once a month, um, to try to have conversations that may be a little bit too long for, for this setting. We want to know how to best serve Tallinn and the best way to do that is hearing from our residents. After all, we work for you. Um, so thank you to all the residents for the trust and place to each of us, I have no doubt that every member of this council takes that seriously. Thank you. So that brings us to item nineteen, communications and petitions from council persons.
So, thank you, um, for mentioning the, um, the voting process and the recount process and thank you to our registrars um, and to our poll workers who do a fabulous job, um, as always, we are really, really lucky to have them. We, um, I, uh, on a later note, um, was talking to some of the residents of the town green and, um, would be willing to contribute to a candy fund, um, I know online, they do it, they do actually do, the town trick or treating is down on the green and, and they work it out so that the residents that host that don't get stuck with the entire bill, so there wants to be like a voluntary fund or something, I'd be willing to work on that.
Contest.
Just, because I know that can get, get to be a lot. And then, um, we had, uh, wanted to know if we could possibly, uh, and I don't know if this requires a procedures amendment or if this is just something that's, um, an administrative thing that from, from, uh, town staff, but currently when we have a packet, um, it goes up, we use it and then it kind of goes away. Um, whereas, uh, like I'm planning zoning their packets stay up and they can be referred to, so, um, if we could, are those packets archived where they can be publicly accessible?
I think they are, aren't they doing that, is Kathy keeping?
Oh, well, Kathy has to keep them legally, but they're available online, I would just need to republish them, I'd have to.
Can we just leave them on, like, like when I go to the planning and zoning website, there's a list of packets and I can just go click on any one of them?
Yeah, I can create a, a similar.
Okay, and it's not like, it's not a, it's not like a, you know, I don't want to imply that it, we need to do something like right this minute, but I've gone.
Then I will look at it, that's fine.
Like, yeah, if I don't, if I don't have it and then I go back to look at it and I don't have a physical packet in my hand. And I usually do try to download it more remotely, um, but also it's nice to be able to tell residents, hey, just go click on that thing, sure, thank you.
Then I'll just, I'll mention one thing, so, um, obviously, the minutes for all of our council meetings are available.
Yes.
And they continue to be available, um, online, um, which I think is fantastic, um, but I, I appreciate Council BB's point about the, the packet itself, which also contains some additional information. Um, any other, um, communications or petitions?
Uh, I'd just like to thank, uh, the residents of Tallinn for putting their faith in me and everyone up here and we're all gonna do our best for you.
Okay, um, so we'll move on to item twenty, public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the council. I'll just remind everyone, um, because of the, the, the change we made, um, this is with a two-minute time limit, so, um, I will start in the room. If there's anybody who would like to speak.
Ten dollars, she opened the October trails, this harder to read than I said. Um, I just also would like to congratulate all of you. Um, sincerely, thank you for running and thank you to our, all of our candidates who ran. I know it's not an easy thing to do, but I still appreciate you stepping up for our town and volunteering your time. I'd like to congratulate our leadership, Chris Brandis Chair and John Buckler's Ice Chair. Although I understand the frustration, I also do understand the circumstances. I just think that something was unfortunately overshadowed in the conversation. You are wonderful counselors. You have been a great support to this community for the past two years, I have seen you both personally and online many, many events for every department of the town. And you deserve to be in these leadership positions, so, just my heartfelt congratulations, thank you.
I will go online. Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd love to speak. I've seen any, I'll go back, uh, in person.
Back to my, it was a line, um, so, um, I want to thank you, Chris, for bringing back Chair Hour. I just, um, I was wondering if there would be a way for me to be able to have a conversation with any of the counselors, that's not just me standing up here and speaking, where I can actually talk to one of you guys about my concerns in town. Because to my knowledge, there's no good way to do that besides like email or, like, see one of you at like a town event. Because if I could do that, I can have a conversation with each and every one of you about what my views are as a student at Tallinn High School and understand your concerns and just like try to, like, and like, you try to figure out how you can help with my concerns. And like, this is all based off of the country of education. Um, I know like, all of you have served before, whether it's this past council or Board of Education and all of you know the devastating effects that it's had. Some of the, some, or some of you guys have not been cooperative in this effort to fund public schools. And I find that like disastrous, that a common good that is used for the future of the country or the world would be neglected like that. I don't understand why anyone would want to neglect the young people of the world, they're gonna be the future. Um, and I question why you do that. But then again, there's hope, though, this budget season can fund the schools. Maybe. I don't feel optimistic, because that's not what history has had. Every year's been a bad year. I've never seen a bad year in my time at Tallinn and that's depressing. And my biggest question is why? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just note, um, obviously, once I have information about the time of the chair hour, I'll definitely make sure that that's known. Um, and obviously, you know, uh, apart from meeting in, in groups that would violate, um, you know, uh, FOIA regulations and things like that, I, you know, I certainly encourage you to reach out to the council, um, to try to set up those conversations, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna go back online. Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to participate. I'll go back to the room. I will go back online. Last call for the room. And last call online. Seeing none, we will close out public listed participation. Um, that brings us to adjournment, uh, any objections to adjournment?
Can I just make a quick statement?
Sure.
I would be happy to provide my phone number to any citizen who wants to speak to me personally at any time. So, there's a way for you to do that, feel free to do it.
Any objections to adjournment? Without objection, we're adjourned, thank you.